I understand you, Kate, you wanna say we have a three. I think it would be less stressful to only for us nominate one and the two already been selected. Yes.
I'll make another comment on that, too. I think that it will make council members work better together because you don't have everybody all on the same page.
I get that's, thank you. That's the reason. So you have different input. When you have all the people in the same page, you cook it, you bring it, it's done. Thank you. Any other comment? This is just clean. I should let you start talking because I'm so tired, but just go ahead. One page. Sixteen point three. Sixteen point. Point three A. Yeah, because if you look here, I like it how the way we wrote it there shall be done with the considerations, council member, expertise, background, knowledge, working experience, and all education. Any comment? I'm moving to the next page. Anyone wanna say something? Go ahead. I'm looking.
I just have a.
Go ahead.
We also have to remember that we weren't voted in by the council. We were voted by our constituents. And for council to start saying that so and so, that council member doesn't have the experience, so we're not gonna pick that council. And it's been brought up to me several times about why certain councils were never picked for certain things. And it shouldn't be up to us council to be always picking because we gotta remember, we were voted by the citizens of our city.
Thank you.
To represent them and to serve on committees. It's not up to you to say how educated a person is or how experienced that person is. See, they've, they've worked hard to get voted in.
Thank you, Yolanda. You mentioned it. This is, they've been talking about the appointment of the board on commission.
Right.
But you said something. You said, "I'm being trying ad hoc and they never been for reason." Guess what? Well, then you'll change. If people pass you, then you can speak in public. You can say, "I'm being, I wanna do this." Then your voice, council can see it. That's how, when we do the selection, you can say, "Hey, I wanna be in this ad hoc committee because" that's so open it nomination, open it to the vote. Yes. Any comment or question? This is. Let Jeff talk. So for B.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I think I can talk, but you've been quiet and you've been drinking coffee.
All right.
I smell his coffee.
I'll talk. So sixteen point two, point B. Council members will prioritize appointments. So this is really going back to your leadership retreat in April and the presentation that I provided last week regarding filling positions for regional boards, commissions, committees, things of that nature. And that there is a, you know, there is a opportunity in here to identify how you participate in those spaces and the value that it brings back to the city and the constituents, as you note, that voted for you.
No comment?
Yes, Mayor. Clarifying on sixteen point two C. Can we read on that one?
Now, we can move to that one, which is really just moving little B right below it. It's stricken there and it's moved, it's reorganized a little bit, but it is the, I believe it's the same way.
So my question is on the use of the word citizens. Should it be, citizens implies a specific status, and I'm just wondering if, if that is intended or if that needs to be in there. I don't know. I have not looked at the, at the code to see if the word citizen is used. It may be. But I know, like, in proclamations and things, I have asked that the, that the term citizen be stricken and resident be put in its place. So I'm, it could be that our code section would need to be changed. I, I don't know the answer to that, but it might be something worth considering moving forward, whether that term should be citizens or residents. And in some cases, it's not even residents, it's business owners.
And in response to that, two things. One, this isn't a help, the first part's not a helpful response because it is just a cut and paste. So, so the, the language, I don't think the ad hoc even really looked closely at this language. But through that lens at least. But to your point, like, and I know that I think only one council member participated in this effort. But back in 2015, when we wrote the comprehensive plan, that council very specifically said throughout the whole document, hundreds and hundreds of pages, change citizens to residents. So, you know, that sort of legislative direction has been provided in the past. And as you note, Mayor, that from the executive branch side, there's been that change in proclamations and other actions like that. So I guess, long-winded way of saying, it wouldn't be hard to run a word search in this whole document and find out wherever the word citizen is used and replace it with residence as a starter.
Thank you.
Yeah, you really, like, handed it off to me when it's all done.
No, we still have the thirteen which we missed. We go back to it. Okay.
Yeah, we do need to revisit section thirteen.
Yes, we missed thirteen. We'll go back later.
But there are changes proposed in section seventeen, particular seventeen point four, which I think is just cleaning up language, not substantively changing it. And then seventeen point five. That's a new provision that's included just with respect to interactions before and after council meetings and during other city business type of meetings and conversations to try to, you know, clean up any other types of, you can still have interactions with staff, but set up a different meeting for whatever that item is.
Yes, Cheryl.
Oh, I have something to say about this one. First of all, if it's before a council meeting or after a council meeting, how can the council have the right to say that? I thought Doug and I cleared this up when Doug had me, do you remember when that was? Doug had me make that statement?
That was five, six months ago at least.
Yeah. So we thought we cleared all this up, so I feel like this one's personally for me. If a staff had a problem with it, they certainly could go to the mayor for it. And I don't know if you can explain it better.
Go ahead, Mayor.
The only thing that, that I can say is that's not part of the official meeting. So it, typically it is that mayor and council have access to directors and to the city clerk's office and to administration upstairs, Melissa and Tammy. Other than that, it, things should go through a director if it is a council-related issue. Outside of council-related issues, if they are individuals, I guess I would ask for clarification as to why, but I'm.
Council member Tracy Taylor, go ahead.
I, I think the reason why I support this in general is that I, I believe that if, for instance, say I have a small business and I am doing business with the city. It's not, I personally believe it's inappropriate to have those kind of conversations and communication, especially before or after a council meeting. We're here to do council business. You can always set an, set up an appointment with somebody or the city staff that you wanna do business with. I mean, everybody has a job and you can conduct your personal business during your business time and our staff's business time. But I believe that before and after council meetings clearly are, are meant for just that, and that's for council business and city business.
Yes.
I have to agree with what you said because, you know, our staff is already here, you know, a long day. And then for us to approach them with some other issues, I, I feel that they should set up a meeting with them in, in your time during the daytime or, or later, you know, before you get off, instead of bothering, talking to the staff during council or after council. We have to be considerate of their time and they've been here all day and, you know, to stay a little longer to, to talk to us about our concerns, that should be done at a meeting.
I know that council member Rakes, you had your hand up. So I'm sorry to kinda interject in the middle of this, but I think it is important to note that the ad hocs conversation was, was also more around, like, the optics of the engagement before and after. Microphones might be live, conversations can be heard, things like that. Other constituents might be in the space. So I do wanna say that it, you had mentioned that you said that it might feel a little personal. I think that it was about other, a lot of other types of engagement. So I think it's important to convey that, that the ad hocs conversation wasn't really targeted at anyone or any individual. Because me personally, I'll say that all the council members really have talked to me about things before or after meetings about a variety of other topics. So it is not pointed towards one council member. But it, I think there was conversation, I recall hearing, like, well, if there's constituents sitting here and you're having a conversation, it's about something unrelated to the city's busy business tonight, that, you know, how does that look? So I, I just wanted to add that context piece, not really.
So just as we said for different, you know how people look to, the blind people look on the spot and they misinterpret? That's the main reason.
I just still
Go ahead.
disagree with the fact that how can council put rules on somebody when a council meeting's not in session or after it's in session?
And I don't, I'm not taking a side on it. I'm just saying I think that when I recollect the conversations, like, this room.
This room, maybe. Yeah, I agree with you that that could be.
I think there, you know, like, if we walk out and we're out in the plaza or something like that, maybe that's different venue or something like that. So I'm not.
I just don't think it's something that needs to be in the council rules and procedures. I don't, I don't think that council has the authority to tell some, a council member what they do before or after a council meeting.
It's not authority. It's a kinda, you have to think of it in future, like, if someone else been here, it's not like you or someone else. Just for clarification, then when someone said, "In future, accuse you like you get benefit," then you say, "No, actually, we have it in our rules that we have not done it." So just sometimes I look to it as a protection. Sometimes there is rules being written in a way we don't like, but rules is not against you, just to protect you in future.
Well, what I'm saying is, as far as council, yes, we're not supposed to, we can only talk to the directors. As far as my private job, that's not true. So it's a different little relationship. Sometimes it's them that will stop me and say, "Hey, I'm gonna drop a key off to you tomorrow to lock the lock boxes," or, I don't know. I guess, Charlotte, I, I would like to kinda hear what your opinion is on that.
Sure. It's, I guess my thought process with regard to this section, I would echo what Director Tate mentioned about kind of the inception of this piece, was, as I understood it, to sort of keep discussion immediately before and after council meetings relevant to city business, business that would be discussed at council meetings, to eliminate sort of the extra conversations just before and after council meetings related, unrelated to city business. Council can decide, just like council can decide with regard to six point six, it's earlier on in the, in the section related to policies, what kind of behavior council wishes from each other, from yourselves. And I think that this is no exception. Whether you like this carve-out or not is sort of, it's ultimately a decision you'll have to make, just like you'll have to make decisions about the policies in, in reference in six point six and Exhibit A. There's nothing, per se, about this that's, applies contrary to what is appropriate or what can be done. It's just a, it's just a choice. It's what, what you want for yourself and other council members. If that answers your question.
Clinton.
Yeah, thank you. I think it's kind of a broad statement. I agree that there's an appropriate place to have certain conversations and being mindful that, you know, when the clerk says the recording has begun, or not even before that, when you walk in here, just being mindful of this space and where we're at. But I know, so I can speak for me. I know there's times where I stopped Director Jeff in the hallway upstairs that is nowhere near earshot of anybody and said, "Hey, what about this?" And didn't we talk about that or whatever the case may be? I've talked to Director Hayes. I've, you know, stopped and asked the mayor a question or something. But so I, I think, I don't know, just, I'm kinda with Cheryl on that as, or Council Member Rakes on that. It's like, you know, it's saying, like, we can't communicate prior to a meeting or after a meeting. I think, I think that, for me, that needs a little bit more, a little bit more cl, I know clarification, that's pretty Clinton's right there, but just, what are we talking about? What specifically are we talking about? Because I should be able to have a conversation with him if we're walking up from the parking lot together.
Your own business.
Pardon me?
Do you talk to him about your own, your business? That's, that's, that's what's written, like, if you read it. Your own personal business. That's, because you have to put in your situation. You have a business.
Right. And I don't necessarily think that, I, I don't have a problem with that. If we're talking about that, me and him parked in the same place and we're walking towards the building and the meeting hasn't started. And we're not even in the building. We're not even nowhere near. I'm just giving that as an example. You know, or we're across the street at the coffee shop and we're walking towards the building, like, I shouldn't be talking to you, like, about anything at all?
No.
Prior to the meeting or after the meeting? I guess that's why I'm saying I need a little more clarification.
Okay, go ahead.
So, Council Member Taylor, essentially what this seventeen point five is, is it, it kind of narrows it down to before and after council meetings. Whether or not you walk out to the parking lot and talk to Director Tate or ta, talk to attorney's story about anything business-related, that's on you. But what's happening in this council floor should just remain city business. That's, that's essentially what we're saying.
I would agree. I would agree. I would agree. I would agree with that. I would agree with that.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I mean, if, if there's concurrence, general concurrence, that this is narrowed to council chambers, that makes sense. Like, that can be articulated in the standard to say that you shouldn't engage in a personal conversation about your home and your home property, a code enforcement situation in your neighborhood, you know, an organization you work for, like, none of that should happen in here. That's probably easy to articulate. We can change that. And perhaps it also is important to say that if there are other venues that are pre-arranged, like, when we have special focus area conversations with a chair and a vice chair, don't bring it into that space, too. But after the meeting, out, walking away, different, altogether. Just don't bring it into those other spaces where the meeting is set up for a particular purpose. Is that, is that constantly resonating?
I'm okay with this sentence. If we could just, you know, again, like I was saying, it was kinda broad. So if we could add some little more defining, to your point, Director, some more defining language in there, I'm, I'm happy with that. I think that's appropriate.
Thank you.
I concur with what we're saying here. If it's just in here, just to keep it strictly on what we're doing. And Chair Amar, you keep saying this is for the future. Once we vote this in, in, this is now until.
No, I understand what you mean. I'm speaking even for future because you start something and next generation, next generation. Yeah, we started now and maybe you will say in future. It's not mean like, we target you, that person. That's what I mean. Everything we do from now and, and for the future, we're not doing it. Thank you. I'll let you, we done now?
No.
Internet, we remove it because it went to the policy. That, I know this one. That's. We are in.
We're just scrolling down.
Seventeen point six.
Seventeen point six.
Yes, I'll let you finish. Oh, you went to, I'm going there.
Well, all the deleted provisions you see in, in section seventeen, those wholesale deletions are, are moving it into the policy section, which we'll talk about. We really, I think, have three items left, just to give a little hope for a finish line.
Thank you. You're missing the game. I'm sorry.
Oh, no. They're losing, so it's okay. So there's section eighteen point four, which adds a piece in about report outs with respect to travel, you know, for city-related activity and report out related to those engagements. So I'll pause for a second. I think this language speaks for itself.
Thank you. Any comment? I see hope.
And then I'm gonna go backwards to section thirteen, which is the filling a council member vacancy. And so sections thirteen point one and thirteen point two. Pretty light on language. And this, you know, I don't think there's any secret. This comes on the heels of having had this experience recently, you know, last year, year and a half ago. So what I did was included a few examples from other municipalities, the city of Vancouver, the city of Bothell, and the city of Lacey. As concepts for adding structure around filling a council vacancy. And it was my own observation that a year and a half ago or so, the council was trying to figure out that process as it was happening. And one thing that I'm not sure everybody realizes is that the council has ninety days to fill a vacancy. And if you don't fill that vacancy in those ninety days, the authority shifts to the county. You lose that ability to influence and make that decision. So I was impressed when I looked at these other cities and they're, they have a lot of common themes, but they add structure around what an interview process is like, what it means, what it looks like to post the announcement that there's a vacancy, what it, how a council moves through a process and making a decision. So to add structure to something that occasionally will come up. So I, it wasn't my intention to come forward and walk through all those options and ask for council to pick one. That's not what we're doing here. But really, it's more about presenting this concept that, that other cities have incorporated either into the rules or procedure or as a policy. So I think that this, I guess I'm presenting it this way because it was, it was, it could have taken, I mean, could have taken us into a little bit different direction on what the ad hoc was set up for. And I didn't want to, like, derail the progress of the ad hocs. So generally speaking, I guess I'd be interested in hearing from any council member that would say, "I don't like the idea of having more structure around filling a vacant position." I'll shut up now.
I'll speak first. I had to read all of them. I like the way how the structure, that all the council, they have the ability to review the application. I saw one of the, I think in page one or two in our package or one or three, it showed that all complete candidate application packets will be posted on the website. So I thought it's more organized if we can somehow adopt it, like, like, open it. Every, every city, all, they have same theme, like you, you get the application, you go to the clerk, they can remove the name, then all the mayor.
Blind.
Blind, yes. And we'll go to all council. That's the only, then, some of them, like, different. I was thinking, like, okay, if we go to all council, we have a open seat imagination, then we get ten people. I think it's some way we need to do it system, like, council member Yolanda will say, "Oh, I like number three, four, five." Council member said, "I like this number." Then after that, the majority people get the majority vote, which we don't know. We will not know. And they like the idea will go public. All the application go public. Go ahead.
Yolanda, wasn't that the way it was before?
It was. We, we had fifteen applicants of, we had a lot. And one of them was not from, from this, from here, from the city of Auburn. It was from outside. So we deleted that. They had everything blank. They just had all the descriptions of what they did. And they answered all the questions that were on there. And so we didn't know who we were picking. We were just going by reading their application. And then we took the top five applicants and then we shared it. We had an executive meeting and we let everybody get to see the applicants. And then we went back. We came out here and we voted three, three out of the five. And then those are the ones that came up and we all, each had an opportunity to interview each one of the top three. Isn't that what we, how we did it? Clinton?
You had five.
Well, we started out with five and then we went from five to three, no five.
Last time. It was just five. Might have been that way pretty, but the last one round, it was just five.
Council member Taylor and I were in that process.
I am like you. So, so I. So the, the go in the process. And the way being done here in the city wasn't kind. It was between three people decided. The way other city they doing it will go to all council. And even the question, no, the way, I think the way being done, they, the ad hoc select the top and the top five, six resume went to the council. They, they did not vote. It was the top six or five went to the council. They did not see the whole fifteen application.
No, they didn't see all fifteen.
That's, that's the difference. We, the change will be in everybody you see. Go ahead.
So I, I agree with Deputy Tate. Lost a minute moment there. I'm sorry. I was telling you, it was coming, it was coming. There needs to be a process. So I guess we all agree with that. And it sounds like there was some concerns about however the last process went, whether it ad hoc or it went here and there, there's, there's, I'm hearing it sounds like there was some concern about how the last process went. So and because, you know, it could happen again, we should probably have something in place that says, "This is how we do this when that happens." And so, thank you, Director Tate, for bringing some examples for us to take a look at. I think it makes for some conversation moving forward from the council on, on how that needs to take place.
Thank you. That's what, I went through all of them. I find all of them, I think, either you agree or disagree with me, they're consistent in the system. Like, all of them, a council would get the whole package. All of them. We, as a council, we submit two questions to the mayor. Then the mayor, if Clinton submits, say, "My question," then I will use my second question. All of us, we will meet with the candidate if we decided, like, if we get twenty or thirty, we may just do, like, filtration, like, okay, you have your top. All of us, we will meet with the candidate if we decided, like, if we get twenty or thirty, we may just do like filtration, like, okay, you have your top six, then... That's how we do when we do interview. We get them blind, we look to the resume, I will submit my top six to my manager, someone else will submit their five, then you do the math, who's our, we agree. Then you go after that, you interview them, you go to reconvene executive session, and that's everything public. Go ahead.
We had our city clerk, Shawna, sit with us when we did all the readings and the picking out, we picked out by scoring each applicant that we had picked up. And each of us, we sat quite a ways from each other, and we got to score them, and we took the highest ones, and then that's when we brought it to council, we interviewed them.
Go ahead.
I, I just wanna say that my intention isn't to try to...
Talk about the best.
Yeah, critique a year and a half ago. My intention is to say that you have ninety days, and you will lose the authority if you can't agree in that moment on how to do it. So don't lose that opportunity. So my advocacy is less about analyzing history and more about picking a structure so that you don't have to think about it at that time. And there's probably lessons to be learned from a year and a half ago, and there's lessons to be learned from, you know, these other options. So I would like to make sure that we don't get bogged down in just history.
Right, thank you. I forget to look to the elephant, because each one of us was looking different piece. So, I think...
And then I think it's the last section on procedures.
Oh. I'll mention it to you, okay? Open it.
The, the count...
Yes. Kate, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I was gonna say, for the different samples that you sent over, are you looking to solicit feedback in general that, yes, we think we should have policy and procedure, because I think we all agree with that? Are you trying to solicit whether you want it to live in rules and procedures or live as a city policy? Or are you looking for, you know, how do you wanna receive feedback against the samples that were sent out? Because some for, I had noticed reference, you know, city manager's office, which we don't have that as part of our construct. So I think we should have a structure, when it happened historically, to your point, you know, we only had ninety days, but we did, you know, we found a replacement and it worked, and, you know, there's certainly lessons learned that people might wanna chime in with. But how do you want to incorporate this into our go forward?
I, I appreciate the question, thank you for asking to help kind of close a more of a conversation and procedural loop. I think I've heard what I needed to hear. I wanted to gauge council's interest in whether there was support for having a structure and a process. I think that we work on that and bring a product back to the, I think the full council, I don't think it needs to kind of keep the ad hoc running along. I think that my intent, Councilmember Baldwin, in providing those examples, yes, there's different forms of government that are listed in there, and it obviously needs to be customized in a way that fits Auburn's form of government. But I think the basic concepts that are in there, I've heard all the council members say that there's general support for having structure rather than leaving it pretty open. I think that's good enough for me, if council is okay that this would just be revisited and brought forward to you as a full body.
Yes.
And then the next item, I think the last item is...
I'll move on to the last one.
Is Exhibit A. And in your packet, that turns out to be page number seventy-two of one hundred and five. It's Exhibit A to the rules of procedure which establish city council conduct policies. And I think maybe what I can ask is more really to turn it over to Charlotte, since Charlotte helped take the lead on authorship and probably knows this section better than anybody.
Sure. So the ad hoc committee had expressed some desire to use city policies as sort of a starting point to inform council members' conduct and behavioral expectations for individuals and for each other as a whole. And as part of that topic, so came this exhibit, which includes, as you'll see, a number of city policies that have essentially been adapted to council as an elected body. So you'll notice in this exhibit, and I won't go through them one by one, I think that that would not perhaps be the best use of time, but obviously if there's questions, please let me know. But the intent was not to create procedure in any way about what to do or how to deal with each council member or the, or the council as a whole abiding by these sort of behavioral or conduct expectations, but rather to kind of inform council and new council members what would be expectations for behavior. So if you look through those, it'll include the section on IT and electronic communication, cell phones, that was seventeen point, I wanna say it was seventeen point six in the original rules, those were the strikeout portions. That's been adapted and put in this exhibit, including some additional language. So this is an informative guide and sort of can be utilized by council members to refer back to questions related to these specific areas. Again, not to develop a procedure for how to address issues, but to be informative, to help guide council members and council as a whole as to behavior and conduct.
Opening the floor for a question, comment, concern? Yes, go.
I had a concern about this, 'cause I kept thinking, we are not staff, we are a legislative body, and a lot of this stuff has to do with staff. And I just don't feel that we're adults, we should know how to behave and how to treat each other and have, have to conduct ourselves in a meeting. And we should be able to hold anybody who goes out of line, hold them accountable with our body of council members, instead of having a guideline that's been... And I know our, our Director Tate put a lot of effort in here, and so did Charlotte, but as a legislative body, I just felt like we already had our disciplined guides in our, in our policy book already. And we've had people in the past that we as council held them accountable and had them apologize to the audience and also to our council if somebody was out of line. And I think that that's just what I thought that we should continue doing, 'cause we're, we're the legislative body, we're not staff.
Thank you. I will hear you before I respond, go ahead, Cheryl.
Yes, we may not be staff, but we're representing the city, that's my first thing. But second of all, do we know of any other councils that have something like this?
The Code of Conduct?
Yeah.
Yeah, quite a few.
Quite a few, okay, that's what I wanted, I didn't know.
Thank you, because for me personally, I believe you have to lead by example. If we have these in our staff, so we should have it in us. Sometimes, and this is, we, I know we're elected, but we should have something, even in any volunteer organization, there is Code of Conduct. This is for, second, we are adults, yeah, adults who cause war and the, everywhere, so, you know. The reason we had it, so this is something for us, if we have something, then we know like as a body, we will decide how we deal with it. And I usually believe like myself, this is clear, like, okay, and when I see like what the policy, I don't drink alcohol. About drink at any meeting, then you know like this is, you represent the city, it's reflecting you, how to deal with other public. Personally, I'm okay to have Code of Conduct, I may get in trouble if I bring elephant next time, but we need to have something. We need to build something for us for future, we cannot be just randomly walk around, we saying, we're adult.
No.
Go ahead, Tracy. If, I'm teasing you, see, but if we have Code of Conduct, you can go say shit to him.
Well, I understand and thank you, Councilmember Amar, for saying that, I mean, yeah, we are all adults, but what's the harm of having a Code of Conduct? I mean, if we're abiding by it, what's the big deal? There's like, I, I don't see what the problem is to have that there in place.
If it ain't in writing, I can't hold you to it.
I did not hear you, can you speak louder, Councilmember Clinton Taylor?
I agree.
You agree with what, having or not?
I agree with the Code of Conduct, yes.
Wait a minute, flip up, let me see again what's...
That's, and so one of them, actually, we had one policy was designed for us, the five hundred and three, and we did all the training with the, before being council, we had to read all this training, like, we done it. So just kind of we have it, we updated for ourselves, just for future. Thank you. Okay, any other thing?
Councilmember Amar, Councilmember Baldwin raised her hand?
Go ahead, Kate.
Yeah, I was gonna chime in that, in general, I had looked through the policies, and for the most part, they all, you know, pretty standard. I think we had reviewed them as part of onboarding within the city systems. I was gonna ask for the committee, I had shared over recommendations last week for consideration for the ad hoc committee, but I was curious if there had been any action on those or any plan for those.
Kate, because you're not here, all of the body here, they get the copy, I wanna ask Shannon, you received it that day, when did you receive the email? The day you...
The email that was provided to the city clerk's office on July twenty-third at eleven seventeen AM, and we forwarded it to the ad hoc committee and Director Tate and Acting City Attorney story, I believe about noon.
Correct, yes. So we received it and was, I know, I will let Jeff, he called you and he left you a message, so... We look in your comment, but the way that we had our meeting, we had three meetings, we built everything, and these came to us at the last day, the final where we reviewed, but, go ahead.
I was just gonna mention that Councilmember Baldwin, I know you're not here local, but I did message you on Wednesday morning, 'cause I just wanted to talk to you and let you know that because of the submitted time, it was difficult for the ad hoc to be able, and staff frankly, to go through all the concepts. I do think that it's important to note that there was a general reception of, hey, there's some thoughts and ideas in here that deserve attention or could be good ideas. But it was difficult, given our turnaround time, you know, we met on Tuesday at five PM, so we had that in hand for about five hours. And we had the next day to get it into the NOBIS system for delivery to council. So I just wanted to talk through that, that the tight turnaround made it difficult to go through the document in, in detail.
Go ahead, Councilmember Taylor.
Councilmember Baldwin, we spent a good part of our last meeting looking over what you suggested as, and there's a lot of great ideas, I think that could be implemented later. However, I believe that due to the last-minute nature, it was just really difficult to get those included into what we presented tonight.
Thank you, and for my comment, I review everything we, as Councilmember Tracy said, some of your comments would be good to have them as a tip, like tab sheet, we handed to Melissa, so they have it. Some, I know like ready collision, I don't think it's ready now, because my understanding will be ready in October, that's why. She raised her hand?
Yes, when you're done with your thought.
Okay, yes, so we look and we read every, your comment, some of them we already had training, like, I don't think you're aware, maybe we, some of them, we get training, it's already done during our training. We got training one oh, class one oh one, we get one oh two, but go ahead. And everybody get cup with it.
Great, I'm glad everybody has a copy of it, 'cause I was gonna say...
And we didn't know you!
What was that?
We didn't know you sent it, but we could know, it's your handwriting.
I think I had my name on it, but...
Now the clerk, when they move it to us, they sent it without name.
So, Councilmember, so that it was an anonymized document, it was anonymized so that we did not have a quorum of the council deliberating on items.
Just for, for record.
So I didn't know when you had meetings scheduled for your group as a committee. I know that your committee had meetings, I sent it before I was out of office, which is why I was unable to connect with Jeff last week, because I have been and continue to be on the road on vacation. So I'm spending this fun evening of my vacation participating in our, our review process. That being said, you know, we've gone through, we've had feedback on your first iteration, your first draft of changes for rules and procedures. We have more modifications that I expect will be coming to come back for review. Do you see any of the recommendations that have been shared being incorporated into the next round of, of edits?
I'll answer that from a staff perspective, and we don't have any other ad hoc committee meetings presented or on schedule. The target was to present July twenty-ninth, the findings of the ad hoc and the recommendations of the ad hoc. I'm not in control of council, so I don't wanna overstep my boundaries, but right now, there's no opportunity to introduce any of the concepts that you presented in that document for a next iteration.
Thank you, Jeff.
Councilmember Amar, Councilmember Baldwin raised her hand?
Go ahead, Kate.
Yeah, again, this is their first review of what the committee has put together, but I think there's an assumption by the committee that what your first draft to us is that it's a guaranteed approval. And so whether I had provided those to you last Tuesday, or whether I had provided them in tonight's session, those are additional recommendations for consideration to go into rules or procedure. So I would be looking for the committee to continue its work, to see how that can be incorporated.
Thank you, Kate, but honestly, some of the staff you recommend, it's not in the council for us. Like, one of the things you add here, one of the things I could go, I think it would be for B three or develop a new ordinance with no budget impact. They have template, this is for staff, there are some things, it's over not kind of our job. I saw one of your recommendation, you recommend two to four hour per month per council to have open city hall for office hour. I think it's a great idea, but we usually have it as a public when they come to the meeting, so we get yours. We know there, there is some good idea of them, but... We know there is some good idea of them, but if you want us to review it one by one, that's okay. Because if you, you wanna go say like addition, like inverting activity checklist, department overview, everything this is done by the staff to us, it should not be in our rule and procedure because that's what being done. We get all of us the department overview. The other thing, I, we read if you want me to go, each one of them, I can read each one of them. The red, ready collision is not ready, how we add it for our next copy. Second, additional, we add like the director by name or the former. Usually, my understanding for any procedure and document, you never name people. And this is, could be separate. Could be separate for, maybe we add it as a one of our policy at the end. The other thing, I know you request the some counseling, the meeting to be notified, which we understand where most of the time, we sign up for the job that we know we have my, our mandate in our calendar. And all the time, when there is meeting being canceled, we know it ahead, so I didn't, I never seem like we need to put it there. Go ahead, Clinton, you raise your hand, you distract my brain.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to distract you. I think that the question was, was there an opportunity for what was presented, even if it did not make it in time to be presented today? Was there an opportunity for that to be reviewed and be considered? Is that a yes or a no? And then, and maybe that's not even an answer for tonight, but I don't necessarily know if we need to go line by line with what is in the document tonight to give explanation for why or why it didn't get in. But I do think that her point should be taken into consideration that the timing effort that she put into putting out those suggestions in place and how the council, the committee ends up doing that or not. I'm just saying that that was, that was the question, was that is there a possibility for that to be reviewed?
Because when you sent a email and you think we don't want to add it, I want to explain to her, we looked at every one of them. We're not saying it came even late. We look what's possible could add and whatnot. Go ahead.
Councilmember Amer, thank you. Councilmember Baldwin, a lot of the recommendations and rules and procedures that you had put in here are more so actions, not so much policies or procedures. You're asking for, you know, adding on, onboarding activities and checklist. I don't necessarily think that needs to go into rules and procedures, that's something that's already pretty much already done through our city clerk and staff. And administration and whatnot, too. The goals, I love, I love that you have goals for our council to engage and whatnot and be clearly guided. I think that's great. Again, that comes back to, it's not, it doesn't fall within the scope of what a policy and procedure is. This is a lot of action stuff, which is great, and I think all of this could be implemented in some sort of form or fashion. But it's not our job as council to review annual meeting calendars, that's staff. That, they set the tone for that, we support that, but that's not our job to do that. I love that you want to do council retreats within the Auburn city limits, I think that's a fantastic idea. I will push back on your recommended two to four hours a month per council member. I know you work, I work, we both have full-time jobs. It's really difficult to find that time, but council members or council members and even constituents can reach me by phone or by email, it doesn't necessarily have to be in office. I will take those emails and I'll take those phone calls, but I think putting a limit on council members to have office hours is, that's entirely up to the council member to do so.
So, this is my last comment for tonight. Again, I would say that the question was, is there a place to take into consideration these documents? And I know, just speaking for me personally, if that was a document that I had submitted and I was, you know, wanting, again, everybody's voice to be heard and I wanted it to be considered, I think that was the question. And so I would, just me personally, and this is no slight of anybody on the council, but I would, if it was a document that I had submitted right about now, I would be feeling a little, a little odd. It would be a little awkward right now because it feels like the document's being kind of vetted out right now, and that's not fair to her. And so I would say that the question was, again, is there opportunity for that to be reviewed in the committee and be considered?
Thank you.
And so either, you know, yes or no.
And as Jeff mentioned, he said some of stuff, it's already been in place. And the.
My own document and recommendations?
I'm sorry, what?
Councilmember Amer, Councilmember Baldwin raised her hand.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Kate.
My hand had been raised for a bit, I didn't mean to interrupt. But I did want to interject with, I appreciate Councilmember Clinton Taylor bringing up my point, which is that I see that there may be additional discussion needed on these by the committee. And the reason that some of the content is there is things that I have heard in the time that I have been serving. So, you know, an onboarding checklist is maybe not necessary if you're coming in at the top of a year, but if you're filling a vacancy, having that as part of rules and procedures to know what's going to be expected of you and what duties you need to be prepared to participate in and perform and achieve, I think is a very useful thing. Being action-driven to say, if we want to put in that we're going to have every first and third month a regular city council meeting and every second and fourth and fifth month, a study session is no different to me than it is to say, you know, every February, we will have a board retreat. And it will be two days and it will have this agenda. That is the exact same thing as what we already have in Rules and Procedures outlining not only the types of meetings that we need to have, but when we need to have them and when to expect them. So what I'm proposing is putting more structure in place to support not only our council as a body and future councils, but also staff to know what we're expecting of them. So when we say we want to engage with staff and communicate with staff and have better mutual understanding of expectations, you know, we came away from places and what I've captured in my recommendations are things that I've heard from meetings, from board retreats, in passing, from people all throughout the organization. So some of it maybe may not be ready, but I think there are some things that are certainly worth consideration. And if there are certain things like a proposal that we have office hours that needs to be discussed by the full body, that's what these meetings are for. My only point at this time of night, because I think we're all probably maxed out on rules and procedures, is that I think there may be a need to have additional discussion. Or not only some of the things that I presented, but perhaps some other things that came out of our review tonight. So having another iteration is normal process.
We heard you. Thank you. Go ahead, Tracy.
Kate, just for clarification, while I understand what you're saying and we're not, we're not sliding the fact that you turned this in the day of our last meeting. Totally understand, but you also knew when the ad hoc committee was formed, it was discussed on council floor at a council meeting, you knew when that was formed, whether or not you knew when our meetings were, you still could have turned this in when you knew that the meetings were happening. But I feel like you turned this in and like bases loaded, bottom of the ninth, expecting a home run, instead you struck out. Do you see what I'm saying? While yes, I understand and appreciate the fact that you'd like to see another iteration, I think it's up to the ad hoc committee and then the directors and the staff that was also included in this on whether or not they have the time, the bandwidth and the capacity to do this all over again.
I think you're describing intent that is not there.
Thank you. I think because we want to honor Jeff, he will be retired soon, so probably we need to finish it for, before Jeff he will be retired, then we have copy ready because we really need to have rule and procedure to move on, to build our council. Then after that, we go, if we want to have retreat in the city or out city, or we have the date because these out of control, it comes from administrative, we cannot control it. It's up to the mayor to decide the date and the director, so this is out of our control, we can request. And all the time, for record, anybody listen to me, all the time, we know Melissa, she will try hard to give us the date, so the retreat will try to match all of us. So that's for record. So I think it's so late, unless anybody has comment. I want to turn it to the, I forget who, Councilmember Acting Deputy Mayor to then the meeting, unless someone has any comment. Thank you.
Kate, thank you for.
Councilmember Baldwin has raised her hand.
Yes, go ahead, Kate. Thank you. Rules and procedure will be completed when it's approved by council.
Thank you. But what we say, so we all one vote, one vote with six body now. Thank you.
Tonight's not a vote.
I know. I'm explaining to her, she said need when the people, I said when we are, we are, we each one of us, we only one vote. That what for clarification, each one of us, we only one vote.
Yes, Jeff.
Can I just kind of make a point of clarification for process? It's your decision, but the next step in this process is for a resolution to be presented to city council to take action on. I mean, that's the next step. So you'll have an opportunity to talk, you'll have an opportunity to vote. So that is right now the next step.
Our table, thank you.
When we will have time to vote, our next meeting is when you should have this. Next Monday at a regular meeting is when we're gonna vote on this. So there's no time for us to be able to talk about this.
That's just it, at council meeting. So you.
Before we vote on it.
Someone will make a motion on the resolution, there'll be a second, and then it'll be open for discussion and amendment and votes and all that, normal process, so.
I hear what, what Councilmember Taylor said about if this was me, I would feel really bad that my, not one of my considerations were being taken. And we don't have an opportunity, I wouldn't have an opportunity to face all of you and be able to talk about it.
Yolanda, just reminder, we read that during the meeting, we read and we looked to every one of them. If we thought one of them, like create inverting, I know I like the idea, but this is not the rules and procedure. This is what should be tab file, ready with Melissa for the new people, we read it. If we find something we are missing, then we add it at the time, just to be clear.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kate, do you have any follow-up? Because if not, we will. My, my follow-up is that I feel like I have provided good recommendations that I would have liked to have more consideration by the committee that that have surfaced now, not only a week ago in your committee meeting, but again, tonight in this first review. And I feel like I'm being told that because you didn't have them earlier, that I get to wait for the next round. And so, you know, it'll turn into a resolution and I will happily continue that discussion when it comes to the resolution.
Thank you, Kate. Just for clarification, as we, we will discuss it in the next meeting. Thank you, we heard you.
Okay, have a nice evening, Kate, and if there's no further questions or anything, we adjourn our meeting. Thank you, everybody.